Beginning, um, item, agenda item number three, um, budget. And, um, we'll be trying to stay on target. We are actually fifteen minutes ahead of schedule. Everyone, if you can please quiet down so we can get started. We are, we're trying to get out of here, um, so everyone can get out safely. So, and we are fifteen minutes ahead of time, so thank you. Um, if you look at page two of, um, the, the advertised budget, um, you will see what we will, will need to be covering during this session. We are going to have a review of the current gap, um, with updated impact of the state budget and the impact, um, on what we just discussed, the third quarter recommendations. We will be discussing the ready reference guide, um, discussion of any remaining February reductions in fees, um, we could talk about that, trying to give staff some guidance. And then, um, as many of us had, um, wanted to, the ladies worked hard this weekend, their staffs worked hard, we have the new budget, um, the demo of the compensation options tool, which we will be looking at today at the end of the session. And that will be available to us, uh, on the board in the next day or so, so we can work on it during the snow break. All right, um, Ms. Michael.
So this morning, we posted just an agenda, thinking it would be helpful to have the points that, um, Ms. Darnett Kofak just mentioned on a slide, so people would know exactly what we're gonna do today. Um, so just to reiterate, we're gonna, um, start today by looking at the current gap between our advertised budget and the funding that was included in the county's budget and the final numbers from the state. From there, we're going to review some additional information that we've provided in the form of a ready reference guide. Um, and then, as Ms. Darnex Kofax mentioned, we're going to discuss the potential reductions in fees that, um, had a February critical date that we hadn't addressed. Then, at the very end of the session today, the board had requested that we provide a compensation options tool, um, and budget staff continued to work, and we just, um, finished this draft over the weekend, so we have that posted as well. So, we're gonna demo that for the board today, and then we'll email it at the end of our session. It's not posted, but we have it to demo for you, and then we'll get it to you today. So I want to start today first by looking at the gap chart between the revenue that was requested and the proposed, um, revenue from the county and state. So we'll wait till we bring the chart up. So, just as a reminder, our advertised budget request included an increase in funding from the county of one hundred and twelve point five million, which was five point nine percent, and that's shown in the first line on that chart. Um, included in the county executive's advertised budget was a transfer increase of fifty-one point seven million. So that results in a gap of sixty point nine million, which is shown in the light blue shaded line, um, on the top of the chart. So, overall, in terms of the state budget, the final impact is an increase of four point two million as compared to FCPS's advertised budget. So the difference between our request from the county, um, their advertised budget with the final state budget leaves us with a gap of fifty-six point seven million, and you can see that on this chart in the first dark blue line. So what we've done on the bottom of this chart is we've included the impact of our recommended actions from the FY seventeen third quarter budget review. So we'll see the available funding of six point five million that we're recommending being added to beginning balance, and then you'll also see recurring savings of one point eight million that occurs from health. So when both of those are included, the gap that we're facing decreases to forty-eight point four million. Any questions on the gap? Okay. From here, we'd like to move to the ready reference guide that we posted, um, so I'll wait as they pull that up. So we developed the ready reference guide to address questions that we've received from board members and also to provide additional information to our community, and we hope that you'll find it helpful. Wanted to briefly walk through it. So first, we'll start on page three. Um, and on page three, we've provided a definition for step and market scale adjustment. Um, as we've been out doing budget presentations and talking with the community, um, and even from the budget task force, one of the pieces of feedback that we received is the definitions of step and market scale adjustment weren't always clear to people. Um, so just to provide that information today, for anyone who's watching or listening, um, a step increase is provided to employees each year based on their experience or their length of service. So if we look at FCPS's teacher scale, the experience factor is listed in rows, which are shown by steps. Then, their educational qualification is shown in columns, and together, that constitutes our salary scale. Many people refer to that as a step and grade system. A market scale adjustment is an annual adjustment that's provided to the salary scale so they remain competitive with the regional market. An MSA increases or moves the entire scale. Right, the salary system, the salary increases of surrounding school systems, federal wage adjustments, and the employer cost index, which includes state, local, and private sector salaries, all influence the recommendations for market scale adjustment. So if we look at the bottom of page three, we have a chart that shows which employees are impacted by step and market scale adjustment and how the impact of an employee's years of service is factored in. So a market scale adjustment impacts all employees, including hourly, because it moves the salary scale. Um, a market scale adjustment is what impacts our competitiveness with other districts because it moves our entire scale in comparison to the other district's salary scales. A step is granted to contracted positions, so it doesn't impact our hourly employees. Um, but step allows our employees to receive an increase based on their years of service. So just to the point of reference, in the years past, when FCPS didn't provide a step increase, to ensure what we call step integrity, which is differentiated pay for teachers based on their years of service, um, we had actually created a new beginning teacher salary that was lower than the salary of step one. That way, we could ensure that FCPS teachers were, um, compensated equally to teachers that we were hiring from other jurisdictions. So that's step and market scale on page three. When we look at page four, we've provided a chart that depicts the salary adjustments for FCPS and Fairfax County government employees since FY twenty-ten, and we hope this chart would provide a helpful comparison. So while, when you look at each individual year, the salary increases weren't equal, over time, I would say in general, our salary increases between county and schools have been comparable. Um, I do want to point out that the county, um, as they indicated at their joint work session with us, um, they did indicate that they've historically provided a process for adjusting salary scales, um, through what they call a market review. And those market review increases to their salary scales are not included on this chart. Right, so similarly, as, as we're doing our compensation study, and we're making recommendations to adjust our teacher scales, right, the county indicated that they have a process where they've been reviewing certain classes of positions each year, um, based on that market rate analysis and then making adjustments. So if we move to page five. Page five, um, shows a chart that's bringing data from the Washington area Boards of Education Guide. Um, the Washington area Boards of Education Guide is, um, provides self-reported data. So each jurisdiction, we all get together in the fall, we agree on what we're gonna measure, and then each jurisdiction reports their own data. So when we look, one of the things that WABE does each year is we try to isolate the impact of compensation on employee salaries. So each jurisdiction agrees to come up with a salary that we feel is representative of what an average salary might look at for our jurisdictions. Then, from that average salary, we add the value of employer-paid benefits so we can compare the impact of benefits. So for FY seventeen, all of the districts agreed to a hypothetical salary of sixty-five thousand dollars, and a comparison of the value of benefits are included on this chart, which is on the bottom of page five. So when you look at the benefits provided by each jurisdiction, they include things like social security, retirement, life insurance, medical and dental, and vision. Um, on the retirement line, we've included not only defined benefit plans like ERFC, but also defined contribution plans and any retiree health credit if it's applicable. Then, for medical insurance on this chart, each of the districts agreed to report the employer cost of family coverage for their point-of-service, um, plan for comparison purposes. So when you look at this chart, if we all assume that we're starting with the same salary of sixty-five thousand dollars, FCPS ranks third from highest to lowest in the region out of the ten districts. Um, but when you look at these, the school districts between third and sixth were within two hundred and twenty-six dollars of one another, right? So there's really limited variability in terms of the value of benefits between those school districts that are third and through sixth. One of the things that we added to this chart as compared to what we've published in our budget questions previously, is in the left column, we've shown how many years it would take a teacher at each of the jurisdictions to achieve a salary that would be equivalent to, at least equivalent to, sixty-five thousand dollars. So everyone's step scale is slightly different, but you can see from this chart how many years it would take you to get to that sixty-five thousand dollar salary. So, for example, at FCPS, you would have to be here ten years to reach that salary level, but if you worked at Arlington, Alexandria, or Montgomery, you could reach that salary level in seven years. So we hope that this chart is helpful as we look at the value of benefits. On page six, we've included a graph that compares our FY seventeen current-year teacher scale with the market average. Um, so hopefully you guys can see this chart. The very bottom line on the chart, in green, shows our current-year salary scale. So that's our FY seventeen salary scale after we made the investment of forty million dollars in this year's budget. Then, the market average for FY seventeen this current year is shown in the blue line on the top. So you can see how our salary scale for FY seventeen compares to the market average. And then, the line in the middle, the dash line, shows if FCPS were to make the thirty-three point two million investment that we've included in the FY eighteen advertised budget, that's where our salaries would be. So you can see, even with the investment of thirty-three point two million, um, while it increases our salaries above the seventeen level, obviously, we would still be below the market average for FY seventeen for the current year. Right, so prior to any adjustments that the other districts make. So if we move to slide, or page seven, to help us think about how other jurisdictions' salary increases might influence our competitiveness, and we have two charts included on this page, and they reflect any salary increases that are included in the advertised budgets of surrounding school districts. And we've broken it apart, so the impact to teacher scales are at the top, and then at the bottom, we have non-teacher scales. So I'd love to talk through the top chart first. So when you look at the top chart, with the exception of Prince William, all of the districts that are reporting data have included a step increase. Now, when we look at schools like Montgomery and Prince George's Counties, you're gonna see a flat dollar amount there, right? That's because Maryland, they're both union states, and their contract negotiations are still ongoing. So as a result of that, none of the details of their proposal are released to the public. Um, for reference, if we just look at Montgomery County, the last time that they, um, reached an agreement with their employees was twenty-fourteen, um, and they had reached an agreement that's effective all the way through this June thirtieth, twenty-seventeen. But based on that fifty-five million dollar dollar amount, right, you know, they could be doing any combination of a step, market scale adjustment, or both. And when we look at Prince William, Prince William has a proposed market scale adjustment of two percent. And then Loudoun County Public Schools has also recommended improving their teacher salary scales. This would be the second year that Loudoun has, um, taken such an action. If we look at Loudoun, they're proposing adding ten point three million to their teacher salary scale. So just to put that into some comparison for FCPS, um, we have approximately fifteen thousand five hundred teachers, where Loudoun has sixty-three hundred teachers. So if we just, um, estimate that out, FCPS would need to make an, uh, an adjustment of twenty-five point three million to have something equivalent to what this ten point three million means in Loudoun County. So, and then the chart on the bottom shows the adjustments that districts are making for their other scales. Um, you'll notice that a number of districts are also making improvements to their non-teacher scales, um, specifically Arlington, Loudoun, and Manassas City. So this is just helpful information. Um, I know as a budget question from Ms. Huff, we posted this originally, and we'll continue to update it as these, um, school districts make decisions. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to get, you know, the final contract negotiations from our Maryland, um, districts, and then as the other districts make final budget So when we move to the top of page eight, um, we have the salary options chart that we shared at the last work session with the board. Um, on this chart, remember, the last time we met, we added option five. Um, and then, as a recommendation from Ms. Corbett Sanders, she had requested that we break out the dollars for the implementation of the non-teacher scales. So you'll see that done on this chart. So we now have the implementation of non-teacher scales broken into school-based administrators, classroom assistants, and then all other non-teacher positions. So just to remind people what's on this chart, I thought it might be helpful to just briefly walk through it. Um, option one is no changes from what's in our advertised budget. So when we look at the gap data that I shared at the very beginning of this work session, after we account for the impact of the county, the state, and the recommendations of third quarter, right, you'll see at the bottom of option number one that we're looking at that forty-eight point four million dollar gap that I started this meeting with. So just looking at the other options, option two was to eliminate the teacher scale enhancement for teachers and to not implement the non-teacher scales. In that case, the cost of step is shown on the first line. Uh, the second line shows fourteen point two million, which is the cost of providing a one percent market scale adjustment to our current teacher scale. And then, the next line was seven point nine million, which provides a one percent market scale adjustment to our non-teacher scales. So all of those in total cost sixty-six point one million. And then you'll see on that next line, the savings as compared to our advertised budget is twenty-six million. So that would reduce our gap down to twenty-two point four million. Option three was to reduce the value of the market scale adjustment from one percent to a half a percent. So in that case, um, the cost of step is forty-four million, as shown on the first line. The next line would be four million dollars to provide a half of a percent market scale adjustment to non-teacher scales. If we were to reduce the teacher scale enhancement by the equivalent of a half of a percent of a market scale adjustment, um, that would be twenty-six point one million. So, when we look at the non-teacher scales, those are on the next lines, so you'll see the cost for school-based administrators at zero point nine, classroom assistants at two million, and the placeholder for other non-teacher scales, four million is last. So all of those items together result in a cost of eighty-one point one million, which would be a savings of eleven point one million, so that would reduce our gap to thirty-seven point four. Option four would eliminate the value of the market scale adjustment. The first row shows a cost of step at forty-four million. The next line is the enhancement of the teacher scale, that if we took out the equivalent of a one percent market scale adjustment, would be reduced to nineteen million. And the, um, final items are the implementations of the non-teacher scales, school-based administrators, classroom assistants, um, and all other non-teacher scales. So all of those items together total seventy million. That's a savings of twenty-two point one million compared to the advertised budget. So in option four, the gap is reduced to twenty-six point three million. Then, the last option five, which we believe is most similar to the county's compensation adjustments, um, this option eliminates some market scale adjustment and the implementation of all of the new scales for non-teacher positions. So the first row shows a cost of step at forty-four million dollars, which was equivalent to the increases being provided to the county, um, for general employees. Um, since the county's been making, um, pay adjustments on their market reviews regularly, uh, we have left in that next item, which is the enhancement to the teacher scale, of thirty-three point two million. So both of those items together total seventy-seven point two million, and that's a savings of fourteen point nine million as compared to our advertised budget, um, and that would leave us with a gap of thirty-three point five million. So we hope you find this chart helpful, um, later when we look at that budget tool that we've provided. Um, certainly, as you use that tool, you can try any of these options or any other combinations as well. So moving ahead in the ready reference guide, the next section is positions. So we're gonna move to page ten. So on the top of page ten, we have a pie chart from the FY eighteen proposed budget that shows all of our contracted positions in the school operating fund. So this chart doesn't include hourly employees, and it doesn't include our hourly contracted food service workers and bus drivers. So when you look at this pie chart, all of the school-based positions are shown in that darker blue color. And then, at the top of the chart, in light gray, are the non-school-based positions. So the chart at the bottom of the page shows a percentage of school-based and non-school-based positions for each of the divisions that are in the WABE guide. And this chart is sorted from the highest to the lowest percentage of school-based positions. So as you can see from this chart, FCPS has the lowest percentage of non-school-based positions and the highest percentage of school-based positions of all of the districts that participate in the WABE guide. So to provide you with additional information on page eleven, um, we have more information about our non-school-based positions. So in total, we have one thousand five hundred ninety-five non-school-based positions, and the pie chart shows those allocate, positions allocated by department. Um, what we thought was also helpful is the bottom chart shows the positions by type, and it shows the percentage of our total positions that each of those groupings represent. So for example, if we look at leadership team and management positions, um, they're point seven percent of FCPS's total positions, um, which is the lowest percentage again in the WABE guide. That's one of the slides we had included in our proposed budget presentation. Um, conversely, when you look at the largest grouping of non-school-based positions, uh, they would be trades personnel, there's four hundred and one of those positions, and they represent one point seven percent of FCPS's positions overall. So when we move to page twelve, we've included a chart, two thousand six, FCPS's enrollment and changes in enrollment, our school-based positions, and our non-school-based positions over time. So if we look in total, since two thousand six, our enrollment is increased by fourteen point nine percent, or twenty-four thousand four hundred and ninety students. At the same time, if we look at our school-based positions per a thousand students, you can see that our school-based positions have decreased by two point nine percent. So even though we've added positions as enrollment has grown, due to budget reductions, we have a decrease of two point nine percent. But at the same time, when we look at our non-school-based positions, you can see that they've decreased per a thousand students by nineteen point six percent. So the significant reductions we took to our non-school-based support, combined with increasing enrollment, have, have resulted in the lowest ratio of non-school-based positions to students that we've seen in decades. So the last section of the ready reference card, the next section, focuses on the reductions that we've taken. So if we look back since two thousand eight, the reductions that we've taken have totaled more than five hundred million, and they've included more than two thousand one hundred and seventy-five positions. So in almost every year since two thousand eight, we've made, need, needed to make difficult choices in light of limited resources. So in the past many times, we've shown how the increase in funding that we've received hasn't met our major cost drivers of salaries, benefits, and enrollment. So when we look, over time, in addition to taking reductions, we've used a program review process to review our programs. Um, we've also participated in the state school efficiency review that really looked at the efficiency of our, um, central offices supporting schools. So the reductions over time have included reductions both to central support and schools, um, but because the budget is mostly positions, um, we also spent, um, a lot of time looking at our positions, looking for efficiencies, we adjusted contract lengths where we could. Um, at school levels, we made reductions to positions like assistant principals, clerical, custodial staff, we've increased class size. At the department levels, we've consolidated departments, reorganized, and taken reductions, really trying to ensure that we were focusing as many dollars as we could towards the classroom and supporting schools. So on page fifteen, um, of the ready reference guide, we've included a chart that compares reductions, um, in FY eighteen for both the county and the school's advertised budget. So the county in their advertised budget included reductions in fees that totaled thirteen point four million. Um, as you guys remember, um, just about half of that, six million of that, came from their implementation of what's known as EGWIP, um, and FCPS implemented that reduction as part of our fourteen and fifteen benefit. It's a change in terms of, um, how retirees participate in prescription health coverage and how that accounts on your future liabilities for other post-employment benefits. So when we look at, um, the reductions for FY seventeen, the county took reductions of thirteen point four, but FCPS included reductions of twenty-seven point five million in base savings as part of our FY eighteen advertised budget. So when we look at each of those reduction amounts as a percentage of disbursements, and for the county, we excluded the funding that they provide to FCPS, the county's reductions result in a decrease of point seven percent of their disbursements, um, versus FCPS's reductions account for one percent of our, um, disbursements in our advertised budget. So looking at this chart, that assumes that the only reductions we make are those already included in the advertised budget, but if we have to make additional reductions to balance this budget, right, those will increase that percentage of our total base for reductions. So for example, um, if we go ahead and include in this chart increasing class size by a half a student and increasing the class-size elementary formula floor from seventeen to eighteen that we had discussed at the last work session, when we add those reductions, FCPS's reduction percentage increase is to one point four percent, or double that percent that was included in the county's advertised budget. So the last page in this ready reference guide, on page seventeen, includes information on the cost of enrollment growth and student demographics. Um, we received some questions about how they're calculated, um, so we thought it would be helpful just to quickly review that information as well. So when we look at the cost of enrollment growth and demographic changes, we don't use a cost per pupil, um, when calculating that budget cost. How we get to the cost of enrollment growth and student demographics is, we apply each of the school board-approved staffing formulas to the enrollment projections that we have on a school-by-school and program-by-program basis, and then we calculate the staffing that those schools would need. Then, we compare that staffing back to the staffing that was allocated in the prior year's approved budget and calculate that cost of growth. So we look at this cost for FY eighteen, I know ten point oh million dollars looks like a rounded number, um, but it's truly calculated by the staffing allocated at every single school and for all of our programs, like general education, special education, and English for speakers of other languages. So we hope that you find this ready reference information helpful.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, as I reviewed this, um, prior to the work session, I found it very, very helpful and has a lot of good information, and, and again, um, points out those areas where there's frequent questions and a nice explanation and a succinct, easy-to-understand explanation. So thank you for getting that done. Um, I have questions on this before we go to our next topic, and, um, I have Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Strauss, and Ms. Schultz.
Um, there's a lot to digest here, and I think, actually, it can be very helpful for driving the conversation. My first thinking, um, is that, here we've had a public narrative that's, I, I forewarned against a year ago, that, um, when we did this compensation study, but the charts just kept focusing on salary pictures and salary graphs and all this kind of stuff, and, and we now have teachers and employee, teachers and principals saying publicly repeatedly, "We're losing people to all the surrounding school districts because they pay more than we do." Then, interestingly enough, the superintendent of Loudoun County Schools spoke and presented his budget to his school board and says, "We're losing everybody to Fairfax and Prince William and Arlington." And when everyone moves past rhetoric and fear, starts looking at hard numbers, then that's when good policy and practice comes into place. So in that chart, which I think was page number five, what's really interesting is, I, I said to Dr. Garza a year ago, "The more we keep doing this, where we just go salary to salary, we could lose really great employees who are believing the narrative and thinking, 'I need to leave, I'm undervalued, undercompensated in FCPS.'" And yet, as chart five shows, which many of us did talk about, we are very rich in our pension benefit. And so, when you take all of that into place, yes, I did hear you that this sixty-five thousand in the scale means a teacher who was here for ten years versus a teacher who was maybe for seven years. Um, and so, we do need to shift that curve where we said people can hit their earnings potential sooner. But what's interesting is when you do say with a sixty-five thousand dollar salary, add in total benefits, and Fairfax County's better than Arlington, and it's better than Montgomery County. So, I, I just feel like we, we need to have that broader conversation with our employees. Because also, what's interesting is, yes, we give more noticeably higher in our retirement benefit, but our health and dental and vision is lower. And again, for some people, they may say, "I may not live in Fairfax County for thirty or forty years, so I don't really need you to be so generous with your, your local pension, but I am trying to figure out in the ten or fifteen years I live here, or I stay in the profession, I need to be able to pay my bills." So, I, I just, I wanted to kind of really spotlight that, because this is where I feel like we have not had as holistic of a dialogue, and I, and I worried that we've had a false narrative. The other thing that's interesting on page five is, at the very bottom, you'll see where it says, "Step closest to the sixty-five thousand dollar..." it says, "Step closest to the $65,000 scale, market average," there's the number eight next to it. So does that mean, so eight years? But then where's all the statistics that show what is the market average in each of those columns?
So for the market average for the compensation study, what we've done, and it appears on the chart on the next page as well, for every district that was used in the compensation study, staff have polled those districts' salary scales and used those salary scales. So when we combine the average, counting every district once, right, from there, we calculate the average, and on average, it would take till step eight.
But I think it still would have been helpful to fill out the rest of that column, so that somebody's looking at it, and they would have then seen all the way across. So yes, we went with the same, we went with the same market average for their hypothetical salary, but everything else should have carried over, so we could have then seen where we are above and below the average for each of those subsections.
Sure, and we can make that change and then repost it.
Okay. So I do think that this is helpful as a snapshot, but I also still think we need to have sort of a even, a more helpful scale with this thing in terms of saying, okay, as we adjust and invest in our teacher salary scales, where you noted it takes you to year 10 to get there versus Montgomery County and Arlington, you'll get there faster. But interestingly, I want to note, the number one, which is Loudoun, you have to get 12 years before you're hitting 65,000. So do you see how we can create misinformation if people don't understand the depth and complexity of just this one chart alone? So someone looks at it, and they just see Arlington's in the number one spot, but actually, Arlington, you'll get 65,000 when you work two more years after that. Because what you're saying is, you don't get a $65,000 salary in Loudoun until you've got, you've hit year 12. Your 12th year, right? So people who think, "Oh, see, look at that chart, Loudoun County's the best place to go work," because you, you've got a $65,000 salary, you're netting $101,000 in benefits. But it's just still not an apples-to-apples, because they're at a different years of service and a different level of step.
Right, we'd also point out for this chart, this is showing the employer cost for the benefits, not the value, right? So that also is a key piece to employees. This is truly just the employer cost.
Sure, it's what the employer is saying to, "When I hire you each year, I'm not just paying your hypothetical salary, I have to pay all these other things." So in order for us to have a teacher who's been with us 10 years, what you're saying, a 10-year teacher costs about $97,600. In Loudoun County, where it's going to cost you $101,000 annually on a teacher, but they'll be a 12-year veteran now. So I guess I would just say is, I think that this chart might be interesting to hear from board members, if we would want to frame this out a little bit more, because I feel very strongly that we've got to help have a more clear understanding, so that we're not sitting there as board members, having principals publicly, even at our business meetings, standing up there and saying, "We are losing people to Loudoun, Prince William." First of all, there's no evidence of that, and secondly, what we know from the WABE comparisons year in and year out, we still have more competitive salary and compensation than both Loudoun and Prince William. But it's now just become this narrative of, "We pay the least," and Loudoun tells everybody they're paying the least. And I want to get past chasing tails and just having more factual conversation on that. In terms of the other thing, and I'm so thankful, is it maybe page eight, where you gave us our options, our one through five options? So what, leading up to this chart, again, I want to compliment you, Dr. Lockhart, and Kristin and Susan and your team. Everything that you put in those prior pages that lead me up to here is so helpful, where you said, "Here's what this district is doing, here's what they're doing." That is an example of how we can go out to the public, and to the supervisors, and say, "We are benchmarking against the region. We are trying to do something that compensation's important, and here's how we stay competitive," putting it in these ways. So I believe that what we saw from the work you've built on is, almost consistently, everybody's giving the step, and that's important, that's defensible and necessary. Our teacher enhancement scales, for me, it's a no-brainer, we got to do that. But I want to just be clear one last time, that enhancement scale of 33.2 million, that doesn't include MSA.
So when we built the future salary scale, we included in the developing of that scale all of the projected movement that the surrounding market would do. So that 33 million included what we said was the value of a 1% market scale adjustment. Our intention wasn't to provide an average market scale adjustment of 1% or to apply a 1%, but instead to include that value in the scale design. So that's how we used that 33 million. So it's really moving the teacher salary scale towards our future scale that we've developed.
Right, but it's built on a premise that the other school divisions are also changing their scales by about a 1% MSA.
So over time, so that's why we included the graphic on page six, really trying to show that even after we make that $33 million investment, we're still going to be below the salaries, the average market for all the surrounding districts for this current school year, for 17. So on this chart, the green line at the bottom is our 17 scale, the blue line is the market average for FY17. And then in that dashed line, we've added the 33 million to this green market, green line that we have for 17, our current scale. So even if we invest the entire 33.2 million for 18, our 18 salaries will be lower than the market average for this current school year.
Oh, Tammy, Jeanette wanted to ask a clarifying question on my question.
Go ahead.
So the reason this is confusing is because we're not implementing the scale change all at once, we're doing it in four years. And so I think it's important to continue that line of conversation, because we're not trying to get to the blue line in one year or four years, we're not even trying to get to that blue line in four years. We're going to be above that blue line, because we've calculated that the other school districts are going to be above that blue line. So that's not that convincing, because we weren't doing it all at once anyway. And so I just think it's important to keep that in mind, to, as Ms. McLaughlin's asking these questions, which I think are great questions, that it does matter that the other school systems aren't doing the MSA, because the assumption was, if we all were to do it, and we change our salary slope and scale, how do we stay there? But they're not doing it.
That's correct. And if you go back to the presentation back in July for the teacher scale, we moved what we thought the proposed market would be, right? So now, and when we presented those presentations, we were thinking we would do it in one swoop, right? But we know this is going to take us four or five years to get there. So there is market movement. So in the superintendent's presentation, it showed where we think 2021 would be, right? So from 17, that, I believe that moved 3% in the market. And then when you go to page seven, it's not just the market scale adjustment that's going to move the market, it's also the teacher enhancements that the other districts are putting into their scale that's going to move the market. That's why those two columns are shaded in gray. So the 10.3 million, and any portion of that 55 and 53 million from the Maryland districts, that's going to move the market. And then the 2% for the Prince William.
Okay, so Ms. Huff said that was, that helped her. So following back with mine, no, I'm glad, I think you might as well catch it all at once.
I'm just going to ask you to be appreciative of the time, as again, we're trying, so if we can, if you can make this your last question, and you can have a go-back if we have time, or...
Totally appreciate, but I thought that's why we had an hour and a half, plus we got another 15 minutes, so an hour and 45 minutes.
We do, but I just, I just want everybody to get that chance, and I promise I'll give you a go-back if you can wrap up after this question.
That's fine, I will just, I'll end with this. I think every single one of us around the table wants to have competitive teacher salary scales, no question about it. Because, as Ms. Huff put it, that we are phasing this in over three or four years' time, there's going to be changes in the system. What is my concern with how precious the dollars are to try and figure out how to maintain class size and all the other things that matter, is we can't get this wrong. If we overshoot, and we enhance the scale too much based on our projections, you can't go to an employee and say, "Oh, hm, we over-invested in the scale, now we're actually paying you more than we would, so now we've got to pull back money in some way, shape, or form." I just think that is just as risky as trying to chase after it versus getting ahead of it, well ahead of it. So I do want to just get that staff response on how are we finding that sweet spot without overshooting.
Correct, and we totally agree, which is why we included the graph on slide six. Our point with the graph on slide six is, we're still chasing the market average for this current school year. So even if we invest the 33 million, if we step back for a minute and don't look at it as a four-year implementation, but just look at the first year, with the 33.2 million, we're still below the market average for the current school year. So that was our hope. This isn't looking out four years in the future, this is really just looking at where everyone's salary is today, ours and the market average, and then if we were to invest the 33 million, where we would be in FY18.
Because that blue line isn't a prediction, that's a reality of this year, this currently what the other, what the market average of the other systems is.
Right, but, so what I think I'm hearing, though, in terms of assurances, are that as we continue this effort, there will be continued assessments each year along, so we don't suddenly find ourselves way above the blue line, which would be great if we were flush as a county with funding, but we're not.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Kofax.
You're welcome. Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Schultz.
First of all, thank you. This is really fabulous information. You guys must have not gone home since the last school board meeting. I'm very, very impressed, because there is new information here. And I might add, I like the name Ready Reference, it's like a 1950's cereal ad, and I will think of the ad, give it enough time, it's very good. One of the things I'm surprised, I don't think anybody has asked any questions, and since people evidently do listen to our work sessions, could you explain OPEB, and where that has come from, and how that's impacted our yearly budget every time? And just also, to get back to our competitive, whatever it is, I have schools that are both on the Loudoun County line, and the Arlington County line, so I do get the anecdotals as to what is the pull. But anyway, you know, in 10 words or less, OPEB, a lot of people don't know, thanks.
I'm not sure we could do it in 10 words or less, other than...
I'll give you 12.
It stands for GASP-45, for those of you that were around back then. This is called the Other Post-Employment Benefit, so it's other than retirement, so there are benefits for our retirees. And what we have is the held subsidy, is our other post-employment benefit, that's it. That's what we call OPEB.
And the amount of money that we have to put in on a yearly basis, and what is the target that we have to get to? And how was it different before we had to do this?
It works very similar to retirement plans, where you do have to fund them as you recognize the expenditures, and you go through an actuarial study and all that. But because this was something that, I'm trying to remember, five, no, maybe it was seven or eight years ago, that government accounting standard said we had to start recognizing, that was the initial year that we started pre-funding for our future retirees. What we used to do is what we called Pay As You Go, so if the $100 subsidy was for, you know, 100 retirees, that's all we paid. But it says we have to pre-fund it, just like retirement, for those benefits that they earn. And what happened with OPEB was, this is where it gets complicated. What the county recognized as savings, the EGWIP, and it has to do with retirees' medical benefits or prescription benefits, and it's how you recognize the revenue stream. And because of those rules changed, we don't have to pre-fund it as much as we did seven or eight years ago. So you start to see savings in that funding requirement for the OPEB benefits. So the school system did that a couple years ago. We found out, we're like, "We're there, please." So we probably recognized five or six million a couple years ago as our budget savings. County just started doing that last year. As part of that recalculation, they're able to see the savings. But the benefits, the value of the benefits themselves haven't changed, it's how we recognize the revenue stream to fund those benefits.
So are we fully funded according to the federal, because that's what, what is the yearly cost?
We pay the actuarial requirement, just like we do the retirement plans. And I believe currently, we have $5 million in the budget to fund the actuarial evaluation of the OPEB benefits.
And what is the actuarial evaluation over time? Because it's, we now have banked a large amount of money, which the feds have decided we have to carry forever.
I would have to pull the numbers and get back to, it's in our annual financial statements, the unfunded portion, just like the retirement benefits.
Yeah, that would be, it's good to see so that people understand where that is.
And we're making progress, so.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Okay, on, can we go to, please, slide 10? I think it's slide 10. Because it's, um... So, yes, this one. Well, if we can make it bigger, because I'm really interested in the table down at the bottom. So I think that I did this on the CIP, where I talked about the fact that percentages tell one story, but they tell the story absent total numbers. For example, how many schools are in the Alexandria City School District? 18, okay. So less than a tenth of the school system of our size. The reason I say this is, is that statistics can be used in such a way to tell whatever story you want to tell. And that's why, when you have the statistics in context, then all of a sudden, you understand. The reason I ask this is, is that comparing the percentage of school-based people in a system that has 18 schools, I have more than 18 schools in my district. You know, so the non-school-based percentage of employees, so for example, how many employees does Alexandria City have? I mean, it's got to be infinitesimal compared to us.
It's much smaller, and you're absolutely right, a district of our size does get economies of scale, but we still think this chart has value, particularly when you compare us to Montgomery County, for example. They're much more similar in size and student demographics.
Respectfully, I don't, I don't think that it has value. I don't think it has value with only the data that's there. I think it is reasonable to add the number of students, the number of employees, to have some idea of context. Are you talking spreading, you know, an economy of scale over, I mean, I would expect, and I think it says on page, if we could go to slide 12, maybe it's the two slides down. It has the calculation down at the bottom of the change, the amount of change, there we go, so down at the bottom. So in a school system our size, I would actually expect that as the student population swells, that the proportion of non-school-based positions would decrease. I would hope that we wouldn't scale at the same rate of student growth, the non-school-based student positions, because there are economies of scale. If you're writing for, you know, a curriculum for, you know, whatever, eighth-grade science, if you're writing that eighth-grade science for 12,000 students or 14,000 students... I, I, whatever, eighth grade science, if you're writing that eighth grade science for 12,000 students or 14,000 students, doesn't really matter. It should, it should go down. And so this is, you know, this is circling back around again to Ms.
Correct, and, and it may be helpful in addition to looking at the percentages on this chart, to comparing the changes in absolute numbers as well. So you're correct. I, I cited the percentage decrease in non-school-based positions per 1,000 students, but also overall, the number of non-school-based positions decreased by 7.7%. So that's a decrease in the raw number. That might be helpful. It's in the bottom line of the chart.
No, but these again, these are, these are, are percentages without relation to the raw number that goes with. And, and, and that's why, can we go, I'm sorry, can we go back again to, to slide 10, to the bottom of slide 10? That's why this is so important for us to, because we're, we're in this, um, keeping up with the Joneses mentality. And the question is that if the Joneses are Arlington, and Arlington has how many schools? Thirteen?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. Okay. They have 38 schools. So that's, uh, roughly 20% of, of our school system. They have a different funding base. They have, um, a fraction of the schools that we have. I'm assuming they have a fraction of the employees we have, that messaging that that's who our absolute comparison is, we're going to lose, we're going to lose teachers, um, based on this. Now, if we can go to the chart that Ms. McLaughlin was referencing, that had, that, that carried out, um, all the salaries and all the benefits. Page five. And this is where I'm going to come to your rescue. I am going to support you to some extent. On the issue that Ms. McLaughlin was raising about losing teachers and not messaging. There is a problem in that if you look at this, that a, a teacher can achieve this hypothetical, and remember this hypothetical, a hypothetical salary, um, in Arlington at year seven, that they're not going to reach until year 10. That's the problem, is they're chasing for a brief period of time, um, an increase, probably when it matters to them. And this is the whole question of defined benefit, um, uh, or not, is that does the money matter? Does the money in the pocketbook matter? And yeah, there's a, there's a period of time where a teacher could punch out of FCPS and go chase a higher salary. That doesn't tell the whole picture. And so I, I remember way back when, when we first started this, I said, it may be a component of our messaging about what a, a complete package looks like. And if the message back to us in the mirror is, they don't really care because no, you know, 25-year-old teacher is making decisions based on what they're going to be doing when they're 55. That we just don't have that kind of an education system anymore, that they're, they're more, um, more interested in chasing the dollar and they'll go to Loudoun and they'll, but then, then in the end... Well, that, and that's, and that's true. And so the not, the, the years on the side that it takes to get to that become important if the message from the buildings is, look, I am losing teachers. Okay, then what? So then it becomes a then what? Because if they're going to chase it no matter what, then basically we're going to be in a yo-yo battle with, you know, neighboring districts. That still doesn't talk to the other side, which is, you know, oh, well, we're so great at our non-school-based, you know. You, you would hope so. You would hope as the, the system gets bigger, the non-school-based percentage gets smaller, we're able to take advantage of the scale. But now my question comes at slide 17, which I, it says, it's 18, it's really 18. It's the last one. Because I would, I would like you to repeat what you were saying about the slide, because I think that you said something very important about narrowing the, um, your projected to what's happening in an actual school. Could you repeat that for us? On staffing, you were saying that you're, you're driving the number of student, or the, the, the actual staffing to the building based on what's happening in actual school.
So what we do is in the proposed budget, we take the projections that we get for every school and program in the fall, and we use those to calculate the staffing allocation for each individual school. So how many teachers, how many clerical, how many custodial? Once we have that complete calculation of what their staffing is, we take that and we compare it back to the staffing that was allocated to them with the calculations that we used for the approved budget from that spring. And then we mathematically calculate what the difference is at every single individual school and what that cost or savings is. And then the $10 million number that you see is the net impact of that, right? So some schools may have gained, some may have lost, but we calculate that on an individual school-by-school basis.
So, so if that's correct, and we're staffing down to the building level on, on what's appropriate for that building level, then we should be staffing so tight as to as to be able to project what students are going where and what teachers will need. Therefore, do we have an idea from year to year then exactly which teachers? Because if you're doing that, then you should know that we need a, you know, we need a, we need third-grade teachers in, you know, in spades. And those happen to be, you know, at the, in that four-to-seven-year vulnerable to being poached, you know, by a neighboring jurisdiction. I mean, it, to me, if the refinement is down to that level and you've gotten to that level, then we should have an early warning detection system of who's likely to be drawn to a surrounding jurisdiction for money. Do, do you have a sense of that?
Slide six. Go to slide six. So a couple, a couple of commentaries. And I, and I know we're all trying to get to the same place, but we say, well, we don't want to overpay our teachers. Okay? Well, I was a teacher in this division for a long time. I never felt like I was in a position to be overpaid, right? So on the slide at year 10, this is me. I have two children, okay? And, you know, this, when I started in the system, it was $12,000 is what I got paid in my first year. So things have changed over that time period, right? But this is adjusted for reality. I've got two children. I'm living in a basement apartment and I'm trying to buy a house, right? And you know what? To say, well, man, I'm not a millennial. You can look at me and know I'm not a millennial, right?
Just barely.
But I'm also, you know, I'm telling you what's in the, my ear in the faculty lounge is people are saying, hey, Fairfax is pretty good because you have a retirement system. You got to stick it out. But the reality is if I use the adjusted dollars, I'm making $65,000 with two kids living in the basement. Do I feel overpaid? No, I don't really feel overpaid, right? And I'm trying to buy a house. And I look at the difference there. I mean, it's hard to tell from the chart, but it's, say, 5,000 extra bucks in my pocket for making a move. I might do it, right? So you, to, to say that people aren't paying attention to the end benefits, I, I think they are. But if your reality at that moment in time is such that you just can't make the dollars work, you, you're going to attend to your family right at that time. So when I look at this market scale problem, that's from like years 10 to years 21. That's when I have my children at home. And then, you know, I get the blessing of three of them going to college, which is a whole different equation in the, in the market scale. You know, and my wife is a teacher, right? So dump, even double that. So I saw something from the skips a couple of years ago where they talked about families in financial duress, what you'd have to make if you had two kids in Fairfax not to be strained. It was like 109,000, 104,000. Right? So my wife and I combined teacher salaries at that time is just a notch above what you would say is financially distressed in Fairfax. So Loudoun, true, maybe it takes me longer there, but maybe I can go out and buy a house out there, right? So I think we're all trying to get the right place, right? And you're trying to look at the reality of, of what you're creating. So I think, can you predict your poaching gap? I'd say right in there in the 10 to 20-year range is where you're going to potentially lose teachers. And if you look at how wide that gap is, that's your current reality.
So the reason I thought that was important, because as we go forward and we look at, uh, uh, on the shifting scale of options, that if, if we're vulnerable there and if we aren't able to fill teachers and if we aren't able to offer, um, in certain high schools, you know, you can only offer one, you know, um, one course at an AP level because you can't hire another teacher, because there's not another teacher to be had. You know, this, this is the ripple in the pond effect, then we can decide more at a, on executive decision-making level where it is that we want to direct our money and how we make our choices. I'm going to go one last time to, back to slide 12 and then I'll be finished, I promise. I, um... So the interesting, and actually you can slide back up. The interesting thing for me, and again, this is data in context, is we see school-based positions change from year to year here. And what I would think would be, um, interesting to note is what are the classroom size changes in, at, in correlation to that? Because you're not telling me, you told me that there's a 24,490 student growth, but I keep not seeing where the students went. How, where did those students, how did those students get distributed within the system? Now, is that because we added full-day kindergarten? And, and I, I actually know, I went back and looked. We're actually down on kindergarten numbers. I'm shocked to hear that. So what, where does the 24,490 sift out when you're all said and done? And do we wind up having fewer school-based positions because we keep depressing, um, class size? Do we, are we having bigger class sizes in some areas so that, that, that the net is that we're increasing stress? And are we losing, um, teachers and then positions and struggling to keep teachers in where class sizes are the largest? Or maybe where they're the smallest and where there's the most difficulty, um, where there's some of the toughest challenges? We, we, this is, this is data, but it's not data in context. And I'm very concerned that we're comparing ourselves to surrounding jurisdictions that don't, that we haven't told the whole story about the number of employees we have, the number of buildings we have, the types of challenges we have, that they simply don't ever have to overcome. And we're, we're perennially comparing apples to oranges. And the apple is never going to not be an apple and the orange is never not going to be an orange, so.
Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I'll make it brief. Um, thank you so much for breaking out the 4 million, uh, for the implementation of non-teacher scales. I had actually hoped that that would be broken out a little bit more on the 4 million. And, and my reasoning is that's a market scale adjustment placeholder of $4 million. That's actually, if we look, that's 12% of the value of the market scale adjustment we're making to the teacher-based positions. But our non-school-based positions is, as you've just said, 6.8%. And I'm concerned that we don't actually have real and meaningful data that says that there is a market scale adjustment that is necessary.
We're going to bring that information to you at the April work session. The reason why it's a placeholder is because those scales are not complete yet. And also for the non-teacher scale implementation, it's just this one-time investment. Teacher scale is 33 million additional each year for four years.
So, so the question is, why are we in a budget crunch that we are facing right now? Why would we front-load the whole thing? Why wouldn't we have a similar staged approach that we view, that we're considering to use for teachers?
Just for the clarification, that's what the board directed for the staff to look and report to us as we were looking at our overall workforce comparison with the market. And they brought to us, and it is, it will be incumbent upon board to make those decisions, whether to do it in one-shot, multi-year approach, or not do at all.
No, I understand that, but it's 12.8% of the investment that we're making in the, um, teacher scale this year. And so I would just, if you look at 4 million versus 33 million. Yeah. And so I'm just cognizant of a difficult budget year that we would, um, put as a placeholder, something like that, without having the evidence of A, whether we're out of whack with the, with the rest of the market and B, whether we can afford to do that on a slower pace.
That is going to be presented, right? Correct? That is going to be presented to us in June or was it?
April.
April, April.
April 20th work session, I believe.
So it's going to come to us before we make a budget decisions in May.
Yeah, but we're making budget decisions now, which could impact, we will be making budget decisions a little later today.
No, we're not going to make a budget decisions today.
Okay, we're giving guidance according to the, the chart that's in there.
That's what we've been talking about. We're going to, we're going to have to maybe take a five-minute break.
Not on, not on compensation that I'm aware of. I mean, maybe some other fish, such as a fee and et cetera. But, but we have an opportunity to discuss that in May.
But how far we go, Mr. Moon, on some of those things will be dependent on how far off of the mark we're at. And so when we, so that's, it all is interconnected.
I mean, I understand what you're saying. When you schedule these work sessions, we have only so many days to put so many things. So that's in April. If you want to do it, if you wanted to do yesterday, just we couldn't fit that in.
Okay, no, I understand, but I'm just raising that as when you consider it's 12.8% of the value that we're putting into teacher, um, scales, we should be aware of that.
So let me could just provide one quick clarity. The way we are implementing the teacher scale in order to keep the stepping integrity, if you're on step three, you stay on step three. So there is always an increase in moving the teachers. The bulk of the cost for the other scales, we're implementing it all at once and putting you to the closest to what you're currently making. So there's a cost component to if we're having to raise a certain lanes because it's, um, below market, then everyone on step one and two would have to go to the minimum salary for that lane. So there's a cost component of implementing the scale. But once we have that in our baseline, we're done with all the other scales. So that's the cost of fully implementing. And then for teachers, as I mentioned earlier, it's of 25% of the total cost.
No, I understand that. I, I've heard it. It's, it's just that we've stretched out addressing the, the challenge for teachers. And so that's my only reason.
So only way we could stretch it out is if you only do a certain groups of employees and not the others.
Okay, that, that's worth looking at though. And then the other thing is just a point of clarification on the chart that shows the total compensation. Um, I would just urge people to, um, kind of building on what Ms. Schultz said. When you look at the total compensation you have for Loudoun County and others, a very large amount, which brings them up higher in the list based on health, dental and vision. And we realize significant economies of scale because of the pool. We also don't know whether those are apples-to-apples or apples-to-oranges comparisons. So I actually think that, that total salary and benefits cost is a little bit, um, miss... Yeah, it's cost, but it, but it could be misunderstood that, um, that large chunk, which is an extra $5,000 a year for Loudoun County, um, might actually not have a real added value because they may be getting the exact same or comparable health, dental and vision plan. Yeah. And that was the only reason, because when you look at that, the most important, the apples-to-apples are the salary, the time it takes to get to the salary level and the retirement basis, the retirement plan.
And even with that, that's our cost. We are looking at the cost rather as opposed to benefits.
What the benefit is, yeah.
As opposed to benefits.
So it's slightly different. Um, yeah.
All right, my colleagues, um, right now, this is what's going to have to happen for us to stay on scale.
All right, my colleagues, right now, this is what's going to have to happen for us to stay on schedule. I have four more board members to speak. Then I am going to ask, and I want to get this done by 3 o'clock. And then I, we want to have the demo of the compensation option tool. We'll then take a five-minute break and then discuss what was supposed to be agenda item number three. I will discuss that with chairman and we'll decide where we're going to go on that agenda item. So, well, when you look at item number three, which is the discussion of the remaining February reductions in fees, that's going to take quite some time. And I want to just talk to the chairman about, I don't want to get into discussion now. I will. At, at, I will talk to the chair about that. So I don't want to get, I don't want to take up time now. Ms., Ms. Huff, followed by Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you. I actually really appreciate the comments a lot of my colleagues have made. And I think the part that maybe bothers me is when we discuss it in terms of we have a shortfall and now we're talking about teacher compensation, the conversation looks like that was the cause and the effect. And I think it's important that a lot of the questions I ask about how our teachers are being paid, how we compare them on the scale are, we want to be the most competitive employer for our teachers in the area, period. And I think Ms. McLaughlin made the point, and I thought you answered it really well, about where the market average is as of this year, where we're going to be if we do the 33 million. But it is still a futuristic conversation because we have a plan and we have a plan based on projections. And the reason I want to articulate that is because when it comes to May, how we say things really does send a signal to our community that if we decide not to do the 1% MSA, let's say, because all of the surrounding districts have not and we are still in the county, which is part of the market average, so I think that's included there. It, it is because we are making an investment towards that teacher salary scale, but we also don't want to cut programs. I personally do not want to be raising the class sizes. I am sad we gave that direction. And it's a decision based on, on market and being competitive, not based on balancing the budget on our teachers' backs. And so I just hope that as, as we discuss it out in town hall meetings, as we discuss it as board members, that we really talk about it as how are we going to make sure we are hiring and retaining the best? And so I just wanted to articulate that. I think the same thing is, I've said it time and time again, based on ERFC. You know, the, any changes we make for new hires is when you look at this and you say, what is our retirement package? It's because we want to be competitive. And so our dollars, when, pretty much it's a zero-sum game. And so how are we going to get to paying the most competitive salary, changing that salary scale, yet still being the most competitive? It's not based on balancing the budget, it's based on meeting the market and meeting our employees where they are. And I think it is important as well to ask staff and superintendent, when we do continue to have this conversation, we, every other county, every other newspaper article I read says they've lost teachers to us. And we're saying, we've lost teachers to them. And I think it's confusing. I think that we're all scaring our employees away. We're all telling them the grass is greener. And we want to make sure that we, we talk about how green it is here, you know? And at the end of the day, salary and compensation aren't the only thing people are staying or leaving for. Workload, we've heard that time and time again. So how are we addressing that in this budget conversation? How are we addressing that when we talk about raising class sizes again? So, so I hope that before we give more guidance and before we, we head down that path, that we do can wait and see, what are the others doing? How do we stay most competitive? And so I don't know where we're going from there, from direction, but I did, I did want to make that clear. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. And I, and I think they're good ones. They're ones that I often, like you say, use in a town hall. And I think they're, they're important. It's, it's important to the way you say things out in public and, and what we do. So thank you. Ms. Palchuk, followed by Mr. Wilson.
Yes, thank you. And I do appreciate those comments. I also really appreciate the way you gave perspective, Dan. Actually, this weekend, I was talking to a neighbor in the dog park and she explained to me that she started out working in Arlington County, lived in Fairfax when she had a child, decided she couldn't handle those hours, so came to work for the county. But after, I think it was five to six years in Fairfax, she went over to Arlington County. She said, I don't want to teach in Arlington. I want to teach in Fairfax, but I can't afford it. I actually just looked up and I appreciate the Fairfax County website has now given this great new, I think it's an interactive PowerPoint on their website. And the third slide on the PowerPoint lets you look countywide and then by district, a lot of statistics. One of them being the average annual income needed to rent an average market rate one-bedroom apartment unit. I'm not sure how they come up with their calculations, but just to share that number, the county average income needed is $60,448. That was in 2015 in order to rent a one-bedroom apartment. I get that. I live in a one-bedroom that I was able to purchase after living at home for several years. And then in Providence District alone, the average goes up to 60, a little over $66,000. So I think it's really important to keep in mind, these are all great conversations, the statistics. I don't know if we're ever going to get to the perfect way to describe a situation and to be able to say this. We have student loans, we have renter mortgages, childcare. It's not a first, you know, it's not a secondary salary anymore. For many, it's a primary salary. And in addition to that, meeting with a lot of my principals in the Falls Church Pyramid say to me, the county is going to start to see what we've been seeing for years. Is that not only are we losing great teachers and great candidates to Arlington, which is down the street, just go a few blocks away, you're in Arlington, we're losing them to other parts of the county. They say to me, you might say, oh, this class, this school, they have 25 students in a class. It's so easy. No, a teacher who goes into that classroom, every single one of those 25 students has needs that they don't see in other classrooms. And so not only are they losing them to other counties, but they feel that they're training teachers, beginning teachers, when they get to the point they're trained, they start to burn out. And they say, for this pay, I need to move to another part of the county where I don't have such extreme challenges every single day in my classroom. So I do appreciate this data. I do think that there are more things we can look at, that we can compare. Housing, we can compare, I mean, 10 years, so that's how long on a, on a bachelor's level in order to pay the average one-bedroom unit, you need to be with the county for 10 years to have that salary. If you happen to have a master's, and many of our IAs who are now going through this great program to become full-time teachers likely won't have that master's, you can get there in seven years, just for that one-bedroom apartment. So I do think this is an important conversation. I do think the context and the cost of living in the county are really important to take into account. I do think we have to communicate it as a challenge. I think we also can communicate the great things and the reasons why people choose to stay in Fairfax County and work with us and appreciate that the professionalism and the support that our county provides. But it's, it's a challenge and for teachers to say, I don't want to leave the county, but I have to, is something that I hear over and over and over again. That being said, I appreciate the presentation and I also want to give a little shout out to Dr. Ramey because these principals are also very grateful on some of the creative problem solving we're doing. And I know we're looking at more of it. So the early hiring is really working. The hiring bonuses are really working. And this IA to teacher cohort, I know you'll tell us a little bit more about it soon, but they've said these are all great things we're doing and we are trying to be creative with what we have. But I do, I mean, it's a whole compensation package. It'd be great to be able to see values, whether it's over a lifetime, you know, career or year by year. So we can give that comparison of, you know, what you get and also what you have to pay, you know, into those, into those compensation packages. Because we're just looking at the counties, at the employer side, but there's the employee side of it as well. And so we can increase, you know, income and we can increase compensation, but do we also, are we also at the same time increasing the employees' requirement? So I appreciate it. I know there's no easy way and I hope we can have that conversation. And I guess my only question for you, trying to better understand where we're looking at the charts. I don't know what page we have the graph here for the master's level. I've been using the scale that goes to 2021 and I think that's very helpful when I, when I talk with constituents. So I know you have the 2017 one here. If the market scale adjustments don't change, does that mean that if we were able to fully implement the 2018 plan, which would have gotten us about a third of the way, I believe to the 2018 market average? Is that not the case anymore? Because that's the 2017. I've been comparing it to the 2018 projected average.
Yeah, so on this slide, we reverted back to using the FY17 because we know that scale is currently in place and there's no projections. So we thought that would be helpful to board members. We certainly could also do another chart and put the FY18 projections on here. Or else depending on the timing, if we wait, just as Ms. Huff said, we'll know much better what the other districts are going to do.
And just to get a general sense, I can't imagine that even without the MSA adjustment, that, that, that market average we've calculated would drop significantly. Will it go close to where we're headed?
So on slide six, this blue line market average is this current year. So that's definitely not going to drop because that's the current scales in place. If we look at what we projected, based on what the other districts are recommending, it may drop some, but it certainly won't drop anywhere near this level because regardless, it's likely to be above the blue line, which is the current year's market average.
When we're having these conversations, not wanting to pay more than the market average, we're not at that risk at all for next year and probably not for the next couple of years.
Correct, because if you look at these lines, we know 17 is what's happening currently. So even if there was no movement in 18, we would still be under that market average. But we know based on some of the proposals for other districts, there is going to be movement in that market.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Wilson, followed by Ms. Evans.
Thank you. So if we could turn to you with slide five. And just to, just to, I mean, I think people have touched on this a little bit, but if I, if you could just explain to me, so if I'm looking at the life insurance column, I guess it's six of the school systems have 852. And then there's kind of a collection of others. Is there any substantial difference in the benefits provided between the different school systems?
So when we look at the Virginia districts, right, there's no change because every Virginia district is getting the same benefit as an employee. But the other jurisdictions are probably paying the entire employee cost in that number that's the $852. Right, so those districts are paying the full employer cost and they're also picking up the employee cost versus passing on the employee cost to the employee.
So in this, in that column, life insurance, we are passing on, Fairfax County is passing on a little bit more to our employees, but the employees are receiving the same life insurance benefit.
Correct, the value is the same.
And if I look at the health dental vision, there's obviously quite a variety in terms of costs to our system. And I think actually in both those columns, it would be useful to put life insurance costs, dental vision costs, because it does imply, I initially thought that must mean we have better benefits.
Yeah, no, and maybe we could put cost in the header across all of them because even retirement is an employer cost.
So in, in the case of health dental vision, is it, is there a substantial difference in the benefits provided across the systems?
I don't know that information off the top of my head to, to know if there's a difference when you look at things like copays, deductibles and total benefits, that I don't know. We would need, if you want to compare apples-to-apples, you would need the actuarial calculation for each plan, which we don't have.
As far as I know, it's never been noted as being substantially different across jurisdictions. I mean, my wife works for Prince William and, and I haven't heard that, you know, she doesn't complain to me that she really wishes she had Fairfax County's benefit package on, on health dental vision. Okay, so, so then, so, so in the column on retirement, again, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, or maybe even 7, if you count the ones that are close, are all at the $10,000 and change number. In this column, is there a difference, is there a substantial difference in the benefits we provide?
So looking at the other Virginia districts that are similar, if we want to just look at like Loudoun and Falls Church, that's undoubtedly the employer cost for the Virginia retirement system, right? It would be the hybrid plan only reflected there. Some of the other districts have supplemental DCs. If we look back to the compensation presentation, right, it would summarize what the other benefits are. But, but for the most part, all of those school districts reporting that $10,251 number are probably the employer cost for the hybrid plan.
Okay, so the difference for Fairfax is the ERFC. Is that the difference in the cost to our system? Okay. So that is a substantial, substantial difference between Fairfax County and other competing school systems, if you will, that reflects the additional cost because we do provide this additional benefit. Okay. Yeah, if you could make the clarification in terms of what, that it's all costs, because I do think that by having all the different numbers, it does suggest to somebody that's looking at it that maybe we're providing something different, but it doesn't sound like there really is. And, and maybe even with a note with a star with retirement that, that Fairfax County, in addition to the VRS, provides ERFC to, to its teachers and other employees.
Correct, we'll be happy to make those changes. Now, we're also going to add those market averages across the bottom of the columns as suggested by Ms. Schultz.
Okay, if we could turn to slide 11. And this is the non-school-based full-time position slide. If you could, I know that the superintendent had, had included an administrative reduction. I think it was $2 million. And, and I did talk to Ms. Michaels in a separate meeting about, you know, my budget question regarding, well, what would it look like if we had the 3%, 5%? Could you just touch base a little bit about, say, what a 3% might look like? Or maybe Dr. Lockhart could talk about that. I mean, I think that judging from what you presented, it may be impractical to think in terms of a 10% or a 5% reduction in, in administrative costs. But I would like people to have the benefit of sort of what would be thinking if we were to say bump up the 2 million to say 3%?
So we've asked for feedback from all of my other colleagues on the leadership team, so we'll be providing more information. But, but just to give some clarifying points that I think will help. Right, when we look at our, our total budget, right, the largest percentage of our budget is for people, salaries and benefits. So any reductions that we make will likely impact employees and the number of positions that we have. And certainly as we head into the 3% and 5% range, that, that's certainly true. So the example that I used previously is when I look at payroll that reports directly to me, right? Even looking at that 1% reduction level, they have a huge challenge in terms of meeting it. They have a very limited amount of funds that are in non-personnel and most of those are for required activities that they do. So for example, the printing of check stock, W2s, they have to pay the company that processes our W2s and mails them out. They have funding in their contracted services for a software that they use called Cobra Ease that bills our retirees and any employees who are on Cobra coverage for health insurance that they're maintaining. So they have to pay those costs. So really, when they look at it, right, they don't have anything they can cut other than people. So when we started walking through some of the changes that we would need to make, as we looked at reductions of 3% and 5%, and, and I think, you know, 10% would be huge, the reductions are significant. So when we looked at payroll, what are the things that we do that are not required by law but are nice to have? Right, well, the nice-to-have thing that we do is we withhold taxes from our employees who live in DC, Maryland and West Virginia. Right, we're not required by law to withhold those, but if we don't, our employees have to take on that responsibility of withholding those taxes and doing their estimated payments on their own. Right, we had already previously stopped doing all the things that we felt were nice to have, whether that was United Way withholding. We already charge our employees for the fees that we withhold from their checks for their employee association memberships, for example. So they're paying a fee for us to process those transactions. So as we look at the potential changes, right, we know that any change that we make will substantially reduce the services that we're providing to a substantially reduce the services that we're providing to employees. Right? So when we start looking at reductions, even 3%, 5%, and certainly the 10% range, it would fundamentally change the services that we're providing. So that's the pieces that our departments are pulling together to be able to share.
Okay. And when do you think that you might be able to share that information?
I know we have asked for that information back from departments, but they're also working with us on budget question responses, so we're trying to get it done as soon as possible. But I know the same people are working on all of the same related items, whether they're potential reductions for next year, budget question responses. So we'll continue to work with all of the departments in getting that information. And at the same time, they have to do all of their current year processing in all the departments because our regular activity of, you know, paying things and, you know, doing all that other work hasn't stopped. So my hope is probably within the next week or so that we'll have it together. I know there, I might be very optimistic, or we're really trying, budget staff.
Free coffee, Ms. Michaels.
I know. I bought the budget staff at Keurig. I know everyone is really trying, and it's not just staff and budget, it's all of the financial staff in all of the departments, right? We've really been leaning on them heavily, and at the same time, again, they have all their regular work, you know, any audits, any other things. So we'll continue to try, and we're working really hard to use the prioritization that board members gave us in terms of their questions.
Okay. And then finally, if we could turn to Slide 12. And this, I think, touches on other board members' questions. So the net delta between FY2006, FY2018 projection is 24,490 students. So what is the, I sort of was struck by Ms. Schultz's question about where are these students? So how many net, what's the net increase in the number of schools over that time period?
No, we probably have, we probably at least have two. We opened a new school for Bellvar, we opened a new school at Bailey's, right, since 2006, probably Mason Crest. Right? So we can get that information. We have the number of schools reported on the benchmarks page in our budget document.
And were there any schools that closed during that time, too? I mean, I guess it's a net number, right? So.
Great for her heart. Come on!
What about, what about Westfield?
South County Middle School.
South County Middle School probably opened during that time period. So we could give you the exact schools that have a change.
Okay, yeah, because it'd be interesting to see sort of how many were absorbed into new schools. Obviously, they have, they absorb a lot, and how many were, how many of these kids were absorbed into existing schools? And I guess the, yeah, and are they all in trailers and modulars is a good point. But also, I'd be curious to know, so there's a 14.9% enrollment increase over that period. How does that look? So when you're looking at, you know, kids in each of the grades, are you seeing, you know, is it a 14.9 across K through 12? How about adult education, and how about in pre-K? So that we can see sort of where, where are these, where do these, where are these people? Because it does strike me that's a big number, and I'd sort of like to be able to get a better handle on what it is.
Sure. Each year's budget document does have the enrollment by grade level, so we can certainly provide that from 2006 to the projections for 2018.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I'll be quick. Just in looking at compensation, which I think, you know, bringing the teacher salaries up is critical. We've said that time and time again. To Ms. Palczek's point, there certainly are some schools that are harder to staff than others, and we have to be cognizant of that reality. Couple of quick questions. Just a straight 1% MSA. What does that cost if we?
So a 1%, it was 14.2 million for teacher scale and 7.9 for non-teacher scale?
So if we just, so yeah, those two together, and if we had an MSA across the board for everybody, that would be the total.
Correct.
So one thing I do think is a little confusing to some of us, and we've talked about this before, the, to the extent that the MSA is included in that 33, you know, if you look at Page 5, it says 1% MSA. If you look at Page 8, it says no MSA. So I do think we probably should clarify that. I mean, I believe I understand now that it's the equivalent that's put in there, but I think we do need to be consistent when we talk about that. If we were going to try to speed up the phase-in, because I, as one board member, I do want to preserve the scale increases, I think that that's actually quite critical. You know, we have said that that's a top priority for us, bringing those teacher scales up. If we were going to do it with the original plan, three-year phase-in, what would the cost of that be versus the 33 for the four-year phase-in? Do you know? Well, 44 is a step.
Yeah, that was our 30-year plan.
Is that correct? I would like to ask our budget people, is that correct? Is it 44?
It was 44 million.
It was 44 million, so if we were going to continue that? And so it...
I was going to smile and say bifocals are really hard. I'm always doing this.
Okay, well, while you're...
Ms. Evans, while she's looking for that, I also want to, just my board members, that when this effort came, first came about a couple of years ago, under Dr. Garda's leadership, at that time, board was considering, and hoping to be able to do this in three years.
That's right.
And then after she left, when Dr. Lockhart had to consider the proposal, because we already put in the first year's down payment with the $40 million, only two years remaining, there was what you were hoping for, then he had to stretch that out to three years, now it's four years. That's a 33.
I understand that. I'm trying to go back to what we would be spending this year if we were doing the second phase-in.
Correct. It was 44.3.
44.3. And is it, was it equally divided three years? Was the third step in the phase-in?
So we've always used the same methodology. So that same amount did repeat for three years, just like the 33 million would repeat for four years.
For four years, I see, okay. Well, I appreciate that. And as I say, I think, you know, from my standpoint on the compensation piece, that's got to be preserved to the extent that we can. So we've got to bring those scales up. With that, I don't know if you have anybody else, or if you wanted to discuss timing, because we are, we probably need to discuss where we're going, because we were supposed to be making some decisions today on other issues, but we've only got seven more minutes in this.
Right. I've missed McLaughlin for a go-back.
Okay, all right.
I'm just, we hadn't touched on the part of this reference guide where it's toward the end where the board supervisors comparison to the school system on...
Correct. Slide 15, or Page 15.
Right. So that was helpful, but one of the things that makes this a little difficult in terms of doing an apples-to-apples comparison is that we are position-heavy, you know, in terms of our operations compared to theirs. So in terms of overall expenditures as well, if we've got about $24,000 to $28,000 full-time employees, I recall they've got about $11,000 to $12,000 employees. So they're roughly about 50%. If you just look at total reduction in dollars and total reductions in positions, then it's somewhat comparable. So in other words, like their overall disbursements isn't half of ours, but it's because they also have to pay for other services. But if you, so in other words, I don't want people walking away from this chart going, so see, look, we cut more jobs and we cut more money, far more than the county, but we're twice as large as they are in terms of employees, and we're almost entirely employees. Our operational cost is 10%, 90% is employees.
Correct. So on this chart, we just focused on dollars. We didn't include any positions on this chart at all. And when we took the county disbursements, what we did is we took their total disbursements, and from that amount, we subtracted out the funding they allocate to the schools. So the transfer for both operating debt and then the $13 million in infrastructure. So that's truly county disbursements less schools.
And I appreciate you making that clarification, because my brain went to total reduction seeing the other numbers and went, oh, I remember we cut about 500-something positions. So I didn't see the dollar sign in that final column, and so...
Yeah, we've cut nearly 2,200 positions. So at the very last column on the right, what we wanted to do is just include the total amount of reductions since 2008. We didn't divide them by FY18 because we don't think that that's an accurate comparison, but we thought it just might help in terms of magnitude to be able to look at the total dollars.
Well, no, I appreciate that. And so again, just trying to get a sense of where the county and the schools have both been trying to demonstrate to the two boards and demonstrate to the public of what we've tried to do throughout the recession and the slow growth since. In my mind, I guess I would have wanted this chart to build that out a little bit for the narrative, because I, I'm looking for ways that we have sort of a complementary, shared dialogue about what each agency's doing, but people also having a sense of, some could look at this chart and say, so look, we're doing so much more than the county did on their side. But there are some parts of their services, they just can't cut because it's, it services ours are employees, you know, into a classroom. It's a different dynamic. So to me, it was more a matter of, we've got about twice as many employees that they do. So when you'd see it cost-cutting, then there might be a piece of it. So I just think that's, that chart there attempts to do something, but I worry about it saying something else. And then the other thing I wanted to just close out, Ms. Kofax, is that I appreciate what Mr. Paris said and how others were trying to talk about our teacher compensation, and I don't want anyone leaving this work session not having at least a misunderstanding of my remarks. Again, I was raised by a teacher, and I know what it took for my father to try to raise a family of five on a teacher salary. He had to leave after 13 years because he couldn't do it. So I don't think our teachers are going to get overpaid. I'm not worried that we're going to overpay teachers. What I am trying to figure out is, as we try to get competitive within the region, within the dynamics of this region, we just have to be really mindful, because I also know our teachers are saying that they're overworked, and every time we talk about class size, that layers on workload. And I'll remind everybody in the Employee Climate Survey, the number-one word that came out in that word cloud was not "undercompensated," it was "overwhelmed." So I just, you know, do think that we have to not only make sure we compensate our teachers as competitively as we can, but we've got to address the fact that something that doesn't cost us anything budget-wise but have a huge impact on employee morale and keeping people teaching here is a workload conversation.
So what, Ms. Evans, what I would prefer to do at this point is look at the compensation tool, look at that right now, proceed with the work session, and then take a two-minute break where I can just huddle with you, and then we can have a board discussion.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. So if we can go to Agenda Item Number 4, a demonstration of the Compensation Options Tool.
So again, thank you so much. Budget staff worked to develop this tool. We have it here today, and we'll be emailing it out to board members. So it's not posted on Board Docs as we continue to work on it. So Alice is graciously offered to drive. So when you look at this tool, at the top, it's the same reduction chart that I went over at the very beginning of this work session, right? So you'll see the second blue line on this chart is the $48.4 million that I started the work session discussing, right? It was the gap between our request and the county's advertised, including the impact of the state budget and all of our recommendations at third quarter. So there's that gap of 48.4. The next section on this chart labeled Preliminary School Board Staffing Guidance, we also wanted to include, just so the board had it, the guidance that was provided to us at the last work session in terms of increasing class size by a half a student, and that savings of $10.9 million, and then increasing the elementary class-size formula floor from 17 to 18, which has a $1 million savings. So if we include both of those, the gap then becomes the $36.4 million, which is highlighted in the gray bar. Okay? So then everything below that are all of the different compensation, the salary options plus ERFC that were included in the advertised budget. So we wanted to take a minute and show you how this tool would work, and then each of you has the ability to use it to help you think through the different compensation options. So next to each of the items, you're going to see a dropdown menu and a little arrow, and you have the ability to select items to turn them on and off. So I thought we could go through and walk through an example, and then you'll see, as we select those items, you'll see the gap that appears in the very bottom blue line on the right is going to adjust. So if we start off by saying, if we were to take the teacher scale implementation and change it to a five-year plan, so we're going to click on that arrow next to four-year plan, and we can change it to a five-year plan, and you'll see the savings that that shows. $6.6 million. Then, at the same time, if we decide not to implement any of the non-teacher scales, in those cases, the two options are include or exclude. So if we exclude the school-based administrator scale, exclude the classroom assistant scale, and exclude the other scales, you'll see that we see all of those savings there, the $2 million, the .9, and then lastly, the $4 million placeholder. So you can see how that impacts that gap that we have on the bottom blue line. Right? It reduces that gap to $22.8 million. So for each of these options, you have the ability to go through and select different things, right? We've tried to give flexibility. So the other things that I want to show that the board members can use is when you look at the step increase, we did give the ability to delay the step increase. In each of these cases, we're assuming that the step will be granted at some point during the fiscal year. So for teachers, they receive their step increase at the beginning of each school year, but for all of our other employees, it's based on your anniversary date. So when we say it, you know, delay by two months or delay by six months, in every case, we're assuming the employee will receive it by June. So if your step date happens to be April, and we delay step by six months, the calculation on the slide is still showing that that employee would get it in June, because at some point during this fiscal year. I also want to caution the board, because it doesn't show you the impact that it has on the following fiscal year. So in the event that we delay step and fund it mid-year, we have to remember that the savings that we're getting in FY18 on the slide will be a cost that we'll have to fund in FY19, because that will be included in our base, but we won't have the funding with it. Then the last thing I wanted to show people, the teacher scale enhancement has different years, so you can pick four years or five years. The other option that you have here is the option to not enhance the teacher scale, but to instead provide just a 1% market scale adjustment. So on this tool, we didn't separate out the 1% market scale adjustment for teachers. It's included within that enhancement, as we've been talking about, but you do have the option just to pick a 1% market scale adjustment instead of the enhancement. Then for all of the other non-teacher scales, you can add a percentage in there. So you do have the ability to pick an amount that's lower than the 1% or higher. You just would need to type in the amount with the percent. So we hope that you find this tool useful. If you guys have any feedback as you're using it, please let us know. But we hope, you know, over the next month, as we prepare for the next work session, that people find this kind of valuable to think through different options.
Any questions for the staff while they're here on this tool? Ms. Evans and Ms. Strauss?
So is there an ability to add MSA? Just add MSA in addition to this, that, or the other thing?
So we have, for non-teacher scales, you can adjust that MSA percentage there. Within the teacher scale enhancement, we assumed that we would either fund the enhancement at four years, five years, or else we would just do a 1% market scale adjustment. Oh, we did four, five, and six. Sorry.
Right. So would it be possible to have just a separate MSA, where we could fiddle with MSA?
We could do that. Our concern was, we wanted to, I guess you would just have to remember to turn off the T... the teacher scale enhancement, make it eliminate. And then you would want to be able to put in a different MSA amount?
I just want the ability to, to do all the different things that, that are available to us.
Okay, we can make that change. Strauss?
On the ERFC, could you just click on it just to see what that box looks like?
Yes. So what we've done is we have not included it. And then the other option that we have in there right now was the option that was included in the advertised budget.
And the superintendent's proposed.
And the superintendent's proposed budget, I'm sorry. Including all of those changes to new and non-invested employees.
Can you? Okay, right. So that was the 4.7, that's what I wanted to switch.
Correct. Sure.
Do anything? Ms. Evans?
So I want to make sure I understand the dropdown for the teacher scale enhancement, maybe based on what Ms. Evans was asking. Is this because your recommendation would be that instead of keeping it at a four-year plan, which is $33 million, and subtracting out 14 million for the 1%, not doing 1%, you would prefer to call it implementing a five-year plan?
Absolutely. And, and here's why. We would like to move to the new salary scale structure. Right? So all of the adjustments that we're making are based off the new salary structure, which is tied to market. If we just apply an MSA to our current teacher salary, right? We're not moving to the new scale. And then any of the steps that we're currently above market, for example, people that are on the bachelor's degree lane and step, you know, 19, they're currently over market. So if we just apply an MSA, right? We're making them more over market versus taking those dollars and investing them where we're below the market average.
Okay. And so the six-year plan is basically the equivalent of taking out a 1% and the five-year plan's probably a half a percent, just in equivalence? Yeah. But, but that's about, that's about what, yeah. Okay, so not quite. All right, I don't know if that helps, that helps me. Thanks.
Mr. Mann?
That was what I wanted to get board members to see, that 1% MSA value of that for the teachers is about $40 million. If you were to eliminate that, take that out, that will become somewhere between six to seven-year plan.
Some puzzled faces. Take a moment, Ms. McLaughlin, and if you have questions, and then we'll take a five-minute break.
Yeah, I, I'm now thinking if some of us have puzzled looks on our faces, how anyone in the audience might be looking at this and now trying to interpret what's going on here. It was my understanding that the board wants to make sure that we do this implementation of the teacher scaling, teacher scale enhancement as soon as possible. So I'm not sure I understand, A, what we're trying to message, and B, do we understand that this could leave some room for high level of concern for employees, the teachers, seeing this and going, oh, my gosh, they might now actually delay this out five years, six years? I don't understand what we were trying to accomplish with this. I actually thought today's conversation, I was excited about the fact that we were going to look at one, options one through five. I think I've heard where everybody's preference is, which is protect the step based on what the region is doing, including the county government, protect the teacher scale enhancement at 33 million. So there's the clear guidance, which would be staff, whatever we do to close the gap, those two things remain a top priority. And this thing to me is just fraught with board members playing with a tool that I don't quite understand. And what, why do we want to leave this for the community now to look at it and say, oh, my gosh, when will we just know and have reassurances that those two things alone are safeguarded?
So, so our goal was in no way to distress employees. I think this was a request that came from not the work session that we had right before the last board meeting, but the work session prior to that. Right? So it was a deliverable that came out of a previous work session.
Right. It was that, and it was to develop a similar tool to what we had before a few years ago. And this is a similar tool. There's nothing here that states any of these options are, are on the table. It is a tool, a tool to look at what it looks like because the next conversation we're going to be having in order to close this gap are what fees or services are we going to be looking at. And so I think it's, it's a fine line and you know, we have, it's, it's, you know, the beginning of, middle of March, and we have lots of time and lots of discussion. So this was just another option for board members or the public to look and to work and to put things out there. There, there was not meant to be any type of messaging attached to this at all. Mr. Wilson?
Could you just click on the, the full step, just so we could see, like, say we delayed four months, what does that look like? So, yeah.
If we were to delay step for every employee by four months, right? That would reduce the cost of step in this case by the 17.7 million. But again, I caution the board that because we're still granting a step increase, it adds to our liability or adds to our requirements for FY '19. So this is one-time savings. We're just deferring or avoiding the cost from the beginning of the fiscal year, but the base will increase by the entire 44 million of step. So that will mean we'd have to fund, in this case, the 17.7 in 2019.
Sure. And so four months would be, would it be at end of the year? Was that when the step, would it be implemented if it's four months?
So for teachers, they typically come back, they get their first paycheck at the end of September. So it would be January when teachers receive their step increase.
Can you just change it to three months, just so I can see the? All right, thank you.
See no more questions. We will take a five-minute break and resume with the budget work session.
Board members, if we could get back to the table, please. Board members? We need one more board member back at the table so I can get started. Thank you. As we look over that agenda item number three, where it is, again, revisiting the list of potential reductions, it becomes exceedingly clear to me, given the fact that we do not want to endanger anyone with an impending snowstorm that is here, we will need more time to do that. So what I ask, again, that our board members, we continue the conversations that we have been having as far as the, you know, the list that the entire Budget Advisory Committee has put out, as well as those put out by Dr. Lockard. And we look at those carefully, and we continue to have conversations. We will schedule additional time for this at another time because in talking to Dr. Lockard and Chairperson Evans, we need to ensure that we do go over the next two agenda items. And we want to, again, be respectful of everybody and get everybody out of here by 5:00. Go ahead.
Just a process question. If I didn't hear accurately what you were trying to say, if we're not having the checklist conversation, correct? Not today? Okay. So I would ask if we could somehow, Dr. Lockard, get a status update on where we are in the budget question backlog? I know that we were asked through our EAAs to send a priority list. But I am worried that we have some big budget items that, like Ms. Corbett Sanders and I requested in November, a question that we agreed to collapse in. And her question would be asked, and I would just review her answer. But, I mean, that was almost four months ago now. And it's a line item that's definitely worth tens of millions of dollars. And I'm very worried. So if... Whether Dr. Lockard or someone can speak to, how far behind are we? And I will just say to my colleagues, the other suggestion I gave to Kristin Michael going forward is, I appreciate that our supervisors want to ask all these thoughtful budget questions. But if we can't even get the school board member questions asked first, and we're the ones that have to make those tough budget calls, I think we have to think about saying to our supervisors, you need to understand, we've got a finite amount of staff. We've got a backlog of 50 questions coming from our school board members. Once we get through those, we'll gladly, you know, take yours in priority. But I think they need to understand that, A, we're working as hard as we can to ask thoughtful questions. But there's only enough hours in the day. And our supervisors, I don't want their questions getting answered before ours. It's the bottom line.
I would agree with that. And I realize, you know, they're working with county staff, and they're, you know, in a little... But I think if we can agree that our board members, because we know where you are, and I don't know if you want to speak any further to Ms. McLaughlin's comments.
Sure. We'll be happy to provide the board with an updated list of all the questions that we have, right, a status on them and what the priorities are. So the board has that. That way also, you'll be able to see what priorities we have from other people as well. We have a number of things that are really in process and close as we're going back and forth with the different departments. And again, we'll be happy to ensure that we're prioritizing all of the school board items prior to the County Board of Supervisors. When we look at budget questions, the other piece that kind of influences when they get done is it depends on the level of detail that the question is asking for and how readily accessible that information is or how easy it is to get that data. And then also where that data is coming from, right? And then the other competing things. So we'll be happy to give you that updated priority list.
Okay. And then I would just say that... I'll only speak for myself. I don't necessarily need you guys to go into an in-depth budget response, even if it's just, I'm trying to find the dollar amounts and a few other things. And you can just send it over. It doesn't have to look pretty. But I think that might help, even if it's... We'll work on a more comprehensive response for you because the public benefits, obviously, from seeing it. But in the short term, you know, go look here and there, and you'll be able to start getting some of the dollar values and the things you might be looking for. Maybe that's a way to triage some of it, too.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. I really appreciate Ms. McLaughlin's comment because I do think that we have been waiting for some of these answers. But I think more importantly is the question about, as we talk about budget reductions that impact student-facing programs, I believe strongly that we should first look at every other opportunity to cut costs before we impact student-facing programs. And what we see here are mostly student-facing programs, which is why the question I posed back in the fall regarding... Actually, posed two questions last year when we had made the recommendation that our budget actually be put forth as in alignment with our strategic plan so we can actually make informed decisions when we decide to cut a program. What is the impact on our accomplishing the strategic plan? I realize that didn't happen this year. But I think going forward, we really do need to find a way of aligning our budget with our strategic plan so that we can make those informed decisions.
All right. And with that, this work session is over. I ask board members, please stay here at the table just so we can change the tape for one to two minutes. I'll be looking to the clerk to nod when I can cut that off. And Ms. Hines, are you managing the next work session?
I am, yeah.
All right.
Give it a minute? Okay.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you so much.